Call the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a seat, please.
I only have to share.
I just realized that. Thank you. The agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to roll call.
All right, Ronald Knapp.
Present.
Kenneth Hall.
Present.
Bonnie Almond.
Here.
Trevor Stone.
Here.
Ronald Glassick.
Here.
Judith Haldeman.
Here.
Jason Donahue.
Present.
Judy Kussler.
Present.
Mayor Tony Pristaj.
Present.
And Mason Small.
Present.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the public workshop meeting held November 7th, 2024, and the regular public meeting held on November 21st. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept or not presented.
From Mr. Glassick, do I have a second?
Second.
On Mr. Donahue, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we're moving on to persons present. Anything to say, come forward and state your name for the record. Nobody wants to talk to us? Okay, thank you. President's report, I have nothing for tonight. Mayor's report?
Thank you. First, I want to thank everyone around Northampton for all the wonderful colorful decorations that I see up and around, which are really bringing this town to life at this wonderful Christmas season. For the council, I have received many more compliments on the tree lighting, how well it was done, and the whole atmosphere with the continuation and the plans we have for next year as part of my conversation to those I spoke with. It's going to be a fantastic new tradition we have, and I look forward to that. But as far as the town itself, the lights look great. The Public Works Department did a wonderful job on our decorations, and we continue to grow as we also see many people driving back to the new tree and just taking a look at it and enjoying it for all that we've done for that. Next, tonight, we have the budget in front of us. Taken a good look at it, and it is a barebone budget. And in this time of high inflation and tough finances in this world, I want to compliment our new borough manager and assistant Brian and Jerry for all the work they've done on the budget itself. Yes, painful as it is, there is going to be a tax increase. And for the safety and welfare of the community, it is a necessity. It's not something that council has taken lightly. It is something that we need to stay ahead of things that are going on in this world as far as the higher cost of things and replacement costs that we need to keep this borough functioning. We have a fantastic police force, fire department, public works, and administration here at the borough, and it's a community we're very proud of. We have it very good here in Northampton, and with council and our administration here, I look forward to more of that. And with the increase, it's a cost we all share. And again, it's not something we take lightly, and it's not something that we're happy to be doing, but it is a necessity, and it's not a matter of it's only so much or this, that. No, it's the world we have today. And it is a modest increase, and as I looked over things and discussed them, it is needed, and it's welcome at this time. So, thank you for the time, and Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy Hanukkah. May you have a very joyful time with your family and friends, and enjoy the spirit of the season. Thank you. Thank you, President.
Thank you. Solicitors' report?
I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. We'll be on to reports from committees. We'll start with Mr. Hall, Admin of Finance.
Thank you. There were 107 livestream views in this of the December 5th council meeting. In closing your package, the Atlas Cement Memorial Museum Trust annual report. And the borough receives its final 2023 surplus distribution from Pennsylvania Municipal Health Insurance Cooperative in the amount of $139,049.59. End of report.
Thank you. Building, land, and recreation, Ms. Haldeman.
Thank you. The Recreation Center will be in receipt of two new stair climbers on December 26, 2024. This will replace two older pieces of equipment, one of which is being donated to the fire department. End of report.
Thank you. Code and police, Mr. Stone.
Yes, thank you. We received the code enforcement report from November. There are 98.32% compliance rate for rental registrations. Also, a reminder during the winter months, it is the responsibility of the homeowner to remove snow from their sidewalks. It must be removed within 24 hours after any cessation of snow or ice. We also received the police department report from November. We had 488 dispatches, 125 incidents filed, and 23 accident investigations completed. End of report.
Thank you. Fire and health, Mrs. Almond.
Thank you. A big thank you to all the members of the fire department for making the Santa Run an enjoyable event for all the families of the borough. Please keep in mind that all fire hydrants must be cleared 30 inches around from snow and ice. The Board of Health will not meet in December. Their next meeting will be on January 28th at 7:00 PM. End of report.
Thank you. Public Works and Sewer, Mr. Glassick.
Thank you. On Tuesday, January 7th, a representative from Musson Brothers will be visiting the borough to discuss the Canal Street realigning project. The project is anticipated to take until December of 2025 to complete. On Wednesday, December 18th, the Public Works Supervisor, Richard Ackerman, Borough Manager, Brian Wellsco, will be had a virtual meeting with South Whitehall Township to discuss the new van trailer that we were informed about. End of report.
Thank you. Doing unfinished business. Moving on to new business. Consider the grant granting, excuse me, consider granting final approval of the 2025 budget.
At the December 5th council meeting, preliminary approval was given for the 2025 budget. After two weeks of review, it's time to grant final approval of the 2025 budget.
Do I have a motion to approve the 2025 budget?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stone, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Almond, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider reappointment to the Northampton Borough Municipal Authority Board.
Ronald Glassick is requesting to be reappointed to the Northampton Borough Municipal Authority Board. This will be a five-year term.
Do I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Glassick?
Motion.
Wow, everybody wants you back.
I'm just gonna make a motion to say no.
Motion made by Mr. Knapp, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Almond, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
The ayes have it. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I'd like to say Mr. Glassick is a valuable member of that board, so I think that's a wise decision.
I concur.
I concur. I wouldn't doubt that for a minute.
Definitely.
Okay, consider reappointment to the Board of Health.
Irene Urban is requesting to be reappointed to the Board of Health. This will be a five-year term.
Do I have a motion to reappoint Mrs. Urban to the Board of Health?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Hall, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Stone. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. All right. Consider reappointment to the Planning Commission Board.
David Stupitz is requesting to be reappointed to the Planning Commission. This is a four-year term.
Do I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Stupitz?
Make a motion.
Made by Mr. Glassick, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Knapp. All those in favor, question?
Yeah, I'm just confirming, Mr. Stupitz filled a position of someone who passed away, so it's that person's position. That's why it's coming, because he just was appointed, that's his new, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider agreement with the Northampton Memorial Community Center and the Borough of Northampton.
The Borough of Northampton and the Northampton Memorial Community Center have had discussions about a new lease agreement. This will be a five-year agreement.
Do I have a motion to approve that agreement?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stone, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Haldeman. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to reports from council members. Starting with Mr. Knapp.
Like to wish everybody nice and happy holiday, and I think we have some, just for Brian, I mean, Mr. Gadingo, I think we have some parking problems on Newport Avenue, they're close to the curbs coming out of the alleys. The cars seem like they're like four foot away from the curb.
Are you very much into the street?
Yeah.
Where are you about?
From 14th to 17th Street? That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Glassick.
Few things, I thought there was a lot of great compliments about our tree lighting, about the whole area. If you drive by there, I don't know how you cannot think that that area just screams holiday, and it shows our fire company, it shows our water authority, the municipal garage, and now the rec center, and it's really set up great. I also want to thank, you know, the mayor for those great comments about the budget and, you know, the tax increase. It was very well said and spoken about, and I want to thank Jerry and Brian for both their time with, spent with Judy, Ms. Haldeman and myself today, this past week, for going over the budget. We went through a very large portion of it, and they had all the answers, and you see the detail they put into it in the work, so thank you for that. I thought it was a great representation of what they're looking to move forward. On the code enforcement, our code income report, there's a last line, if anybody has that in there in front of them, it says registered rental properties are 527. So it's registered properties are 527 rental properties, but the known rental properties are 536. Can somebody explain why? There's nine of them that are being contested. Oh, that they're not rentals? No, there's nine that have not been paid, correct me if I'm wrong, there's nine that are in process of being I understand what you're saying, that's why the difference is then. Okay. I think if we knew that they're rental properties. There's five, there's six rental properties and 527 that have actually been registered, the other nine are Not registered, okay, thank you. That's where you got the 98%. Right. Okay, understand. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday and a healthier New Year as we move forward, because change was evident in 2024, and it's only going to be even more so in 2025. But thank you all for the moving forward in the NBMA position again. I do look forward to working on with the Water Authority as well as the Borough Council, so wishing everybody that Merry Christmas, take care, that's all my report.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue?
Thank you.
I see on the code enforcement, we have my favorite address, 1071 on Av. Lavaque Avenue. I see it's 34 days. Then we're past that.
It's being, it's being looked at.
Okay, I'm assuming he's gonna get a Christmas card from Mr. Hawkeye's office?
He's being looked at.
Okay, because it still looks the same to a certain extent, I mean, okay, that answered my question. Next question, I drove by here the other day, I see track controllers back there behind the building here? Is that our property or somebody else's property?
Our property.
Is that our, is that our equipment or not?
No, it is as of January 2nd. There are signs posted.
Okay. That's versus that. Last but not least, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy and Healthy New Year. End of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Almond?
I don't have anything to report, but just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy and Healthy New Year 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Mason?
I'd just like to thank the Firehouse for hosting their breakfast, it was a great event and definitely well attended, and other than that, I'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Paul?
My name is something different.
It's a lottery, you've got to check off.
I said my name is different.
Well, I have to work on it.
You're new here.
What, is it Ms. Haldeman or Judy H? Or?
I'm not sure what we're going with then. I too want to extend my thanks to Brian and Jerry on the budget, and thank Ron for Mr. Glassick for allowing me to attend. It continues to be a learning experience. I think we did also, it was noted, we had some increases in a lot of the rec fund areas, the pool, things like that, which I'm sure, you know, can be frustrating, but necessary. We have not heightened prices in some of those areas for quite some time, and I think that they were very reasonable increases. So hopefully, moving forward, we can, we can continue to help our town with those funds. I did want to question, is anyone allowed to attend that meeting on January 7th when the Musson Brothers come?
Yeah, and once we get official time, we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
What meeting was that?
It's for the relining project on Canal Street.
Okay. And if I may attend that?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
And I, I just, one little piece of business that I'm kind of going to bring up now, but more obviously for the New Year is, is again, I really feel strongly about reviewing what it would cost for an engineering study at 26th Street to stop that truck traffic. That, I'm just, I'm really starting to be concerned about the narrowness of that street, the parking on it, and the trucks, the 18 motors that are going down to that. And is it again, I apologize for the name of the 40?
Forty-eight forty.
Forty-eight forty. And then I was actually also approached by a resident in concern for station alley, which Mr. Hall brings up repeatedly, so I know that's another area that, you know, hopefully in the New Year, we can, we can maybe work on also. Other than that, I also wish everybody a Merry Christmas. It's a pleasure working with everybody on this, on this council. I think that we all do great work together, and this year has been a shining example of how well we all do work together, so I certainly, I can't say I've enjoyed it all, but I, I've certainly learned a lot, and I appreciate everybody's time that they've given me anytime I've reached out, so thank you and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
Yes, thank you. I do want to commend Brian and Jerry for the budget well put together. I know some sacrifice had been made, and, you know, it happens. You know, I just saw the other day that Montgomery County increased their taxes by 9%, excuse me, there's another one that increased it by 25%, so
Yes.
These are things that sometimes are necessary. I want to congratulate Councilman Glassick for his reappointment from Northampton for Municipal Authority. Honestly, you know, you're right, that you're very knowledgeable to give us direction, so I do appreciate that. And also your willingness to wear multiple hats, so honestly, I appreciate it, so. That's all I have. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Okay, thank you. I'd also like to thank Brian and Jerry and your staff for putting, you did a bang-up job, I think, and it's been discussed many times. Coral Lavaque Avenue with the cement block and stuff behind it in the, behind the diner, halfway up the hill, it's been sitting there with a chunk of concrete behind it for over a month now. I don't know if anybody was aware of it, but I didn't report it, but I'm reporting it, I guess, now.
We'll take care of it.
On the northbound side, it's been sitting there with a little bit of concrete behind it, but you got a chunk of concrete behind the wheel, I think it's concrete or whatever.
Okay.
Santa Run went really well, and then we got hours late start because of the fire that we had over in Copley, so we, we just rolled, we just went into the next thing, started a little bit later, got it, got everything going. Breakfast, like Virginia Councilman has said, was well attended. The next one is on January 12th. So, we're getting high compliments and stuff on these breakfasts, even competing against some of the other breakfasts that are, this past one that we had was on the same day as another local one that's been going for years, and, you know, we still, it still did pretty good. I can also say, as Haldeman also said, I actually had one today, I was on the front porch, I saw this car come across and zigzag across Lincoln, and I didn't have my phone with me, I would, but that car went down there and got to my garage, and it just, it didn't even hit the brakes until it got down to Washington Avenue or whatever, so, and I know Chief Gadingo's aware of it, watching it when he can, but just making reports to him when he can. And then everything else, I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and, and to the council and everybody out there, end of report.
Come on, hear more.
That's it.
Madam President.
Yes, go ahead.
An area between the Roxy and Dollar General, is that public, is that our parking lot, or is that private?
Yeah, let's see, a parking lot for the Dollar General.
Yeah.
Because there's a car there that literally has like the green mold underneath it, the tires are flat, it's a truck sitting there, I didn't know if we can have them tow that, so it just
Well, that would be the property owner, but I mean, if it is, if the vehicle's not legal, code would have to look into that.
It's a blue pickup truck, and there's actually
My knowledge was that parking lot is for Dollar General.
In between it?
Yeah, in between buildings.
Okay, okay. And a lot of people use that to walk up to the Roxy or walk up to the restaurants and stuff like that, and it does seem like it's a little bit questionable at times. Conditions.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to say anything else?
I just want to compliment the committee who put the lease together for the community center. It's been something that's been on people's minds for many, many years, and for you to push it across the finish line as you did is truly a wonderful feat for everyone involved. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and please, I tip my hat to you and for the time you spent, I know might have been some frustration there from what I understand, and some ups and downs, but it's done, and thanks to you, it's done, so hats off. Thank you.
Attorney Stewart?
Yes, it's been a really dynamic year for the Borough of Northampton, and I'm very pleased to have been a part of it, and I look forward to the work to be done in 2025. We've accomplished the terrific things here in 2024, and so I look forward to it. I have, I have my list, my to-do list as we move into the New Year. Happy holiday and wishes for all the best in 2025.
Well, thank you. I also concur with everything that we all said, great budget, great lease. I know that it was difficult to do, a lot of personalities involved, and we came through shining. We really pulled together as a team, and appreciate that. Thank you, Mason, for all your reports. You only got, what, three more months with us? More?
More.
Okay. I thought you were going, I thought you were going to the academy, so I'm sorry.
I didn't want to say that out loud or anything.
No? Okay, you could stay longer. Yeah? It just seems like it goes first. Okay, on your announcements, Mr. Sorensen.
I have a few things. First, I need to start with an apology for something. There is, I feel like we got some praise up here for a few things, but I feel bad saying this, but we missed an agenda item that should have been on tonight, and I know you're here for a planning commission recommendation, and somehow it fell through the cracks.
It was, I was gonna ask
Yes, and it was, it should have been on the agenda, and I'm not sure how we would have asked in there, but we kind of just, it was a planning commission recommendation for the storage facility out of Ora Drive, and we should have, we had it for the last one, it was supposed to be on this one, we pushed it off, we had so much last time, and I apologize, I'm sorry, we wasted your time coming out here, we didn't have it on, but we will definitely have it on the first one. So, I start with that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I had trouble getting the agenda app online, so I figured I'll just show up.
Yeah, yeah.
I am sorry.
That's our fault, and we got on the
Well, we thought they were perfect.
Yeah.
I just missed my kid's basketball.
All right, all right, well, I don't know, very feeslick way of them. Just tell Adam not to charge, you know, you won't charge him for that time.
Yeah, I'll tell him.
Secondly, I have, the Atlas Cement Museum is on the half of this building. Mr. Penny has been taking tours written there, and I want to share, he asked me to share a recent tour that he did for a group from China that was here. They were, they were here a couple of years ago already, and they came back again to tour it also, and there's a couple of people, I won't stand up there and show everybody what I have, but they are entrepreneurs, they are architects and engineers who have helped build dams in Tanzania and in Africa. They came and visited the cement museum, very wonderful experience, they were very nice, it was great. So, I have a few things, I'm going to come up to the front there, and I'll share with the guys what Mr. Penny wanted me to share. Mr. Penny asks, I have to, you know, have to do, I'll try to keep it shorter than what he would have
Please do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd be here in January.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Penny.
So first, this is a picture of the visitors that came. Mr. Penny's in here with his daughter, Sally, and then other visitors everywhere, that was from the last time they were here. We're gonna hang all this stuff up in the cement museum at some point also. This is a scroll that they gave as a gift. It'll also be hung up in the cement museum. It's upside down.
What does it say?
So, this means high cliff, deep valley. It is from a, their ancient proverbs, kind of signifying the, what cement does, how it makes things, it's like, that's what they use to determine what the, the proverbs.
Jerry, high cliff?
High cliff, high cliff, deep valley.
Okay.
Over here is the year and the date of when they were here, which was December 9th, 2024. And down here, it says to the Atlas Cement Museum. Over here is the, is his name, I don't want to say it wrong, it's Han Wang, and then respectfully over here.
Good thing for Chichis.
Yeah. But, yeah, so they were, it was a great visit, took some pictures, Mr. Penny loved it, and he asked me to share everything.
Did you say that's Chinese?
No.
I didn't do babble on my way down, so.
Also, while I'm down here too, you know, we talk about the livestreaming, there's always somebody that watches from Florida, so this is my cousin Robbie right here, he's from Florida, and he's the one that always watches from Florida. He's in town, he's hanging out, and he came to see it in person.
Welcome.
How's the volume?
Thank you.
Is it getting better?
See that girl back there?
That gets worse now.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yep.
That was very good.
Is that all, Jerry?
Yes.
All right, so in Councilman Glassick's report, yes, January 7th, Musson Brothers are here for the relining project, like preliminary kind of walkthrough. Jerry Rich, no, Jerry Marzen and I sat in the conversation about a week or so ago, talking with Nick from the Musson Brothers
So he's gonna fly out on the sixth and then do a walkthrough of the area. Um, and kind of different areas around public works where things can be stored, because certain things have to be kept at certain temperatures. Um, project, if it even starts in February, we're looking at it leased through December. So there's gonna be a lot of times where roads are gonna be, parts of Canal Street's gonna be closed, there's gonna be detours. Um, our people are gonna probably take care of the traffic control, because that'll probably save about a hundred and fifty grand by just doing our own traffic control.
Question, are the events that are scheduled for down there, they, have they been told about it?
No, because this, we just found this out, so we will, once we do the walkthrough.
The pause, the pause alone, that is just a traffic nightmare when everything's good down there, I can't just imagine when the streets are.
Yeah.
It's something we'll address, make sure they know these dates ahead of time.
But once we do the walkthrough, we'll be able to know exactly, so um, you might, yeah.
No, go ahead, just finish your sentence.
No, you might, we, so you might see some public works guys down there more often next year, because they're gonna be kind of going along with them. So you'll see that they'll probably be hanging out in the vicinity of Canal, so they can be handling traffic.
So actually, two things, one will also be Queenship because of the school there and the students and bussing in and out, but, so is, temperature's going to impact it, so starting it, so when you're putting this, this material into the pipes, you're saying you can't do it in certain kinds of weather?
No, so certain, their material has to be kept cold in certain areas and then warm in other times, so.
So weather will not impact their ability to work?
No, pretty much no, so they, in the beginning, it's gonna be a lot of cameraing, so they're gonna camera the main. Camera and cleaning, yeah, so the main line will be quick, it's the laterals that take the long time.
Okay.
So the main line, they said they can camera in about two weeks, I think they said, and then it's the laterals that will take.
So they could also.
Whether it's eight a day or something. Yeah, eight a day, which is.
When they're using these cameras, could they potentially be find, identifying other issues that we make, such as the limestone cavern?
So they, they will be sharing all the cameraing with us and that way, because there's discussions either happen about, are we doing this lateral or we not?
Okay.
What are we doing in, has to be a relatively good flow of information, because if they get delayed, then that changes mobilization, more money, traffic changes and then.
And this is utilizing our engineers quite significantly then also, or is it more of our public works?
The engineers were a part of it in the beginning to set up the scope of it and then part of the bid process for it, so they are aware. The, Gilmore is aware of the process, because they're the ones that got us in contact and set this up in the first place.
Okay, thank you.
Um, second, like Jerry said, I, I would like to apologize, it's my fault, not his. So, I apologize. Okay, sure, Judy's fault. Uh, no, so I can guarantee you it will be, well, there's a lot of items on the January second agenda, but we will put yours.
Your work first.
Got it, we'll put you as close as li, like legally possible to the top of it, so that way, once it's done, then you can, you don't have to stay any longer, so. My apologies.
It's fine.
Um.
It's her fault.
Now, there you go, her apologies.
I'm at the top too. I own the company, so all, everything goes up.
So, um.
I accept.
Kind of furthering on with everyone talking about the Christmas tree, um, I have been hearing great news, um, our fire chief has been reporting that when they are in the firehouse at night, there is a line of cars that are in the parking lot taking pictures. So people are getting out, taking photos, so, which is something we weren't able to do on Main Street, because that would be impossible. So it is a great opportunity for people that if they aren't able to make the tree lighting, they are, been going out and it's been active. And I know there's been some issues with it turning on, um, it's actually a good thing it hasn't been on, because that means it has been tripping, which is, means it's not a fire hazard, which is good, it's just because of the weather. That won't happen next year, because we are gonna improve the electrical, so we will trench things and make it better. But if it's not on, that means it's probably just wet, which means it shouldn't be on.
Were there cars driving down behind the rec center?
Yes, well, that brings up another point, yes, so um, people were driving on the Norbath Trail behind during and we have been finding out that that is not just during that event, it is a regular thing.
I've seen cars, we were walking on it and there's cars were driving down it.
So one of our crew chiefs, Andrew Marzen, he was in touch with Brian Coates of Northern County Recreation. And technically, we own that portion of it, that is the borough's portion, so we are gonna put up preventative measures, dollars to prevent people from going down there.
Thank goodness.
So um, we are gonna get a recommendation from him on what they use and so we're gonna just kind of emulate what they do on other parts of the trail. To prevent that, because not only is it wrong, but it's also a big safety hazard as well.
Okay.
So.
Brian, sorry, where is the tree?
It is, right in the rec center park, so.
This way?
That way.
Yeah.
Trying to remember where I am. See, you did this to me. So over there, you can see, if you look out, if you go, you can literally see it from parking lot, behind, so right on rec center.
Since I made the trip up here, I'm on one.
If you're going back to Horace, it's basically on the.
Why you did her too?
If you want, you can take a picture, there might be a line, but. Um, other things are, Jerry did send out, Jerry has been working on compiling the list of updated rec fees for the New Year. And rather than have you just see it in the agenda two days before, um, he did send it out today, it is basically like a red line one, so you will see the, the, what it is this year and what's proposed for next year. Um, if any, anyone has any questions or anything that they want to talk about, whether they don't think something is fair, or they want something changed, wherever you put on it, just let us know. Um, and then we will happily discussion about it, so that way, so it's not all inundated on the second. You have at least a few weeks to kind of look at it. When you're bored on Christmas and you're like, nothing more that I want to do but look at rec fees, it's. If they're blowouts or, you know, boring. Um, and the last thing is kind of to go up with the mayor said, um, the one and a half mil increase is not exactly what I was intending to do. But unfortunately, with things such as the street lighting going up a lot, about ninety thousand if projections hold, that it alone is almost a half mil. So it is not really what I wanted to do, but unfortunately, it was pretty much what we had to do to kind of keep functioning. Hope is to not have to keep doing it in the future, but this will help us a lot next year and going forward. So while it's not necessarily the information people wants to hear, unfortunately, it is just what needed to happen to pretty much function. Um, and last but not least, I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday. If I do not see you over the next few days, have a wonderful Christmas, wonderful New Year. And I see you for us. I could imagine they quite length the agenda for the second. I thought, well, it's the New Year, everything with the New Year, New Year, new rules, right?
Put him top and cut it.
One agenda item, everything else. So you will see on that January second, the tax increase will be on there, the rec fees and then all the other stuff that we need to redo.
January second, where is it?
What's it?
January second, seven P M, same time, same place.
Okay.
And that's him.
That's all.
That's it, I mean, I can, I can come up with more.
Could you?
Yeah.
Cause it's too early to quit.
Oh, never.
Never too early. Never too early.
Okay, thank you, thank you ladies and gentlemen.
I mean, it always has to be on January second, is that correct?
Um.
Even if it falls on a Monday or Tuesday, it has to be on January second.
It's codified.
Yeah, that's why I thought so.
Yeah, this year it works out.
It's quite convenient this year. Okay.
Okay. Moving on to motion by a council member to pay the bills. I have a motion.
Motion.
Made by Mr. Donahue, have a second.
Second.
By Ms. Arman. Questions?
Ms. Halldeman has them.
Are you training her, is this it?
I didn't even look at her, I didn't even.
If you have any questions, she can email.
I, I actually only had two, but I need to locate them, sorry. My apologies, I know everybody wants to go. Actually, one was, okay, one was answered. What are, what are the car washes for?
Car wash of police, please.
Doesn't Chief Goodingo have time to just throw a couple of buckets of hot water on those vehicles while he's?
He's supposed to have a computer on that. He did look at when he got, how many he got washed the last time, I know, at one time.
But I'm working on a cheaper place.
Aye.
Oh, good. While we're waiting, Barrington Drive, is there an estimate for a start on that project?
Yeah, so former engineer representative, now current zoning officer ran those uh, specs for it. Um, roughly, we can anticipate about a hundred grand if the borough contributes work towards it.
Starting when?
Uh, we have to go out for bid for it, so it will be a little bit, but you know, probably imagine sprint time.
Very well, thank you.
Poor Knopf Law, we, we, we're paying them to send out the delinquency notices?
Correct.
It's a lot of money that we send.
We do get a lot in return.
Okay.
It doesn't show up, you don't see here, because this is the expense sheet, but it very much well pays for itself.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, so. So that, so they handle all the mailings, the, the collection of it?
Yes, they handle all of it, yeah.
And the, the fitness, that's for the, for the, for the rec center, five hundred dollars just for wipes?
It's a lot of wipes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of wipes.
And let's talk about wipes, they're, they're the ones that they use to wipe down.
Yes, do sterilize, do sterilize, we're not talking like baby wipes, we're talking sterilization. It's cheaper than when they, so if he's, sometimes he does go through more than anticipated and we've had a order, say, through like Amazon or something, it's a, it's a quick thing until spot partners.
To take it in.
But this will last him three months maybe?
Okay, and, and I'm, I'm glad to see that, obviously, that just continues to show that they are, they're very aware of keeping things clean down there.
The more often we buy them, it's actually better.
Yeah, okay, alright, that, that, those were my questions tonight, thank you.
He's got me intrigued now.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I'm just looking over it, it does have me intrigued, I didn't get a chance to look at them. No more questions for me.
No more questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. I need a motion by a council member to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
By Mr. Hall, do I have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Stone, meeting adjourned.